Pledge of flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could the secretary perform a roll call tenants, please?
Here.
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 Here. Okay, all the board members have received the minutes from the May 1 meeting. If there's no...
Much to accept.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, our first item on the agenda this evening is adjourn public hearing for Betero subdivision. Entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion is made, say it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We did receive a memo from the applicant's engineer. He's asking to adjourn this to June 19. But before we adjourn this, is there anybody that came out tonight that wishes to speak regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn this to June 19.
So move.
Okay, motions made, we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passes. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding site plan and special use permit for Myers Corners Solid Farm, Lightstar.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. So, so I guess you've received the resolution from the planner?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and also there was another comment letter from the engineer as well?
Yep.
All right. So, I mean, at this point, I mean, we're pretty much far enough along. Did you have any concerns regarding the conditions that were laid out within the resolution?
No, I think they're all very reasonable.
Okay. All right, so with that said, if there's no discussion regarding this this evening, entertain a motion to approve the resolution as drafted.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Okay, so you're all set, just this point?
Thank you very much, I have one sheet that should be signed by you, I think, for NYSERDA, which is...
Finish this.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you get signatures. That's the way it works.
Okay, all right.
All right, so you have to satisfy the, satisfy all the conditions with the planner, the engineer, the attorney. Once they sign off, and they said that all the conditions have been met, and there's been no concerns, then we're okay to go ahead and sign applications.
Okay.
Or sign the, the site plan approval at that point.
Yeah, this is just with the, the NYSERDA incentive program, just to say that the resolution has been accepted, so that we can begin the application process with NYSERDA, in order to secure a spot in the incentive program.
If you want, leave it with the secretary.
I'll leave it, yes.
Then we have the attorney take a look at it, and if it's, you know, if it's something that I can sign, then we'll, we'll get it signed for you at some time in the future.
Got it.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda this evening is Torregrosso subdivision.
Good evening, Brian Wass from D.A.S. Stokoez Engineering.
Hi, good evening. Okay. All right. So I guess you've, I guess you're here this evening for Brian Stokoez?
Yes, he had a conflict, and I was low man on the totem pole tonight.
It looks like we still have some outstanding items, there was the two letters that were produced, one from the planner, one from the engineer. It looks like we're still looking for certain items. You did address some of the items that, you know, that were in previous letters, where I guess were addressed.
Yes.
I don't know if we want to have some discussion on that, I guess the driveway was the, was the one item.
Yeah, we're looking at, it looked like you have the water main under the driveway.
I believe that was the location of the previous iteration, we had a dry pond, and when he redrafted the driveways and everything, it didn't, it just didn't get moved over. We plan on finalizing the sewer and water when we approach the Dutchess County Department of Health for the sewer, so we can get camo involved in Dutchess County and address all those comments in one, one back or so they're all coordinated.
Now that you've eliminated the pond, can, can, it can go to two separate driveways in there?
It is feasible to go to two separate driveways.
Rather than shared.
We're showing the shared, just to get a driveway off of that cul-de-sac that's right down by the edge of the road, so if you had to access it, it's not on top of, it's not on the driveway, right in the corner. We broke it off as soon as, as soon as we got in, we prefer individual driveways. Again, everyone likes separate driveways, more marketable, so we're trying to minimize where they overlap and potential conflicts to the extent possible, so we come right in, split right off, and have the two smaller driveways.
So you basically have 10, 15 feet shared. So the next set of plans will show that?
The shared portion?
Yeah, well, the new configuration there, and without the water line? It looked like you had room on the side.
Oh, yeah, no.
Around that water line, too.
We'll move the water line over when we, in the next round of addressing these comments.
Would it, would it be possible to move the cul-de-sac and then have two separate driveways? I understand why you would want to not run a driveway over the cul-de-sac.
We can look into the, cul-de-sac's pretty flexible in their shape and layout, we can see if we can...
It's only that, it's only that the code strongly discourages shared driveways at all opportunities, and so for us to approve a shared driveway that's 20 feet long...
Doesn't have to be a shared driveway.
Yeah, it doesn't really need to be.
I could try to see if you can get something a little closer to them.
Long and narrow, instead of more of, more rectangle, instead of square, and put in between the two curb cuts.
Or even bring it back into the property.
A little bit. We can investigate that, for sure. If I heard with the DEC, we have reached out to the DEC some time ago, and they requested additional information. We sent that in, some pictures, and some narratives and such and so on, and we just haven't gotten a reply back yet. So we're still...
The, the Indiana bat note, can you direct me to that, I've been looking for that.
I cannot, I will, I will look and see if that was not a inadvertent layer management issue on our part, and we thought it printed, and it did not.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
The one thing we're looking for is infiltration testing on your, where the cul-de-sac...
We'll get that back out there, we'll coordinate that, and, and the three different systems, we'll show each one of those.
Yeah, and we want to, I think John's comment here is, we want to be witness, we want to witness the testing.
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
The rest of it's all mostly administrative, and confirmation from water system operator, New AgSec Fire Company confirmed that their largest vehicle can negotiate the driveways, whether or not a fire hydrant is required, and of course, obviously, you know, county health, which you know you have to do. And then meter pit coordination with town system operators, the last two are based on the length of the services.
They're long services, yes.
Yep.
All right. So I mean, there's still a few things, I guess, that still need to get addressed. I mean, the timeframe, I mean, we don't, I mean, with the DEC, you don't have any timeframe with them that you know of? How long ago was it that you resubmitted to them?
A little over a month ago, I think, with the items they requested. Brian Stokoez was, reached out again this afternoon to see if he could, he didn't get a reply, to see if, where that stood. I'd called here before, hoping to see where we could go with or without that, I had a feeling that that was going to be a particular sticking point, so I am aware of it, and I am trying to, to get, get some kind of answer, so everyone can move forward.
Yep.
Is there any DEC approvals that are required?
At this point, not that I'm aware of, no, we don't have any wetlands, just...
Only as far as the, with the SWIP, right?
Just the SWIP.
Now that's...
That's a basic SWIP.
It's not an individual permit, like a wetland permit or anything?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know where, I mean, to go with this, I mean, to put it off to another meeting, I guess, at this point.
Resubmit and come back, my other question is that, a hearing was closed on March 6, the 62-day clock was waived.
Yeah.
Jim, do we need, is that, waiving of that clock, is that, we need him to renew that, or is that just permanently waived? Okay.
Yeah, I would say that just, yeah, they waived it, so it's, it was, you know, it's on them to bring the information forward, so...
Okay.
Yeah. So at this point, I mean, I don't know if there's really too much that we could really discuss tonight, just kind of update the plans, you know, hopefully you get, hopefully you get the DEC, or, you know, get them to more or less sign on about the, it's more the turtles, I guess, than anything.
Right, no, I understand, I rolled the dice, I was attempting on pulling it until I could get something from the DEC to, to give you guys, but I, I said, hey, I'm on the top of the list, let's, let's come say hi.
Kind of been a, kind of been a holding, holding pattern on this at this point. So I mean, if you get, you know, as soon as you can get something, get it submitted to the secretary, and put it on for, you know, the next available meeting.
Yes.
And we can, we can move forward from there. But I mean, we're close, it's just a lot of...
Right, we're pushing, we're trying to get that, so we can get to the Board of Health, they like to see at least a negative deck before they really get too far into anything, so...
Okay. All right.
All right.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda this evening is architectural review regarding Executive Park building signage.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Nancy Forrest, I'm with GNS Group, representing Executive Park. And I believe you have before you what we are hoping to do. When I spoke to the owner, we discussed keeping all of the signs uniform in both size and color. The only difference will be that the letter styles may change, may vary, if they want to use the letter style they use in their logo. They are single-sided electric box signs with LEDs, acrylic faces, and stencil cut black faces. Pretty simple, I don't know if you have any questions on them, or...
Well, we're, they're kind of unattractive, the ones that are put in there, there may be a couple different options you could look at.
Such as color?
Such as what?
Color.
I think it's talking more about placement, I think, or the type of signs. I don't know if the, I mean, the gable end ones, you know, where it's go flat to the wall, kind of makes sense, but, I mean, I don't know, the ones that go up on the, on the roof, you know, with a bracketed installation, I don't know if there's another way to do that, or change it a little bit.
The only thing they could do would be to come down and go under the overhang because of the way it's built, there's nothing to attach them to, to go just below, just below the eve, that's why the, just the two in the, there's only two in the center that are on brackets above the roof line, which we usually paint them to match, keep them low to the thing, so you don't really see them from the road at all.
Yeah, even like, I don't know, like, what's the other place down the road there?
I think Corporate Parks is white with the colored letters rather than black.
Yeah, they have that, or...
Multiple colors on the building?
No, they could have, they could be white with black, or whatever color, but they should be somewhat identical except in the name, so they don't look a little crazy up there.
So it's really just the black then, you just don't want the black?
Yeah, they're extremely, like, generic looking.
Or, or even which one is top there, or something like that?
The one, the one that's further down the road, where you have white faces in all different kind of colors, actually, most towns don't want those any longer, they want a uniform look across the building, and one of the reasons we want to do that here is because, first of all, they're, due to the setback, their freestanding sign does them no good, you're past the building before you see it, heading south on Route 9. People typically read from left to right, and if we have one that wants a red sign, then the next person says, well, I want yellow then, or I want purple, I want blue, and then everybody kind of loses, because when you look off the road, your eye's just going to go to the most vibrant color.
Yeah, no, no, we're talking all the same colors.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Just something a little more attractive?
Let me see if I have them here, we had actually given the owner some options in color. And, let me see if I still have them in here, he did not like them. We had a, I believe we had a gray, a rust, and a blue. I don't know if they left them in there.
With colored alternatives, the same material, same style of sign?
Same style of sign, yeah. You really don't have a lot of option there, there's not, if you look at the building closely there, you can see there's nothing to attach to, that's just like a hollow six-inch board there, there's nothing to attach to for any kind of sign, in all honesty. Those two in the center, because of the way it's built, would pretty much have to be that way unless there was another peak there, then we'd, of course, put them all flat on the building. If we could do that, that would have been our choice. We first thought to put them underneath, and then when we surveyed the building and its build, we realized that we couldn't do that.
You said there'd be logos also, or different boxes?
Not logos and pictures, letter style.
Okay.
The signs are very small.
Right.
Some of them are going to have a wider spance of a storefront.
I think the problem is, you submitted this, and this looks, nobody likes this.
So in other words...
So we just want to make sure you're doing something else.
So in other words, even though the ordinance doesn't say something has to be a certain color, you would have the option of choosing the color?
Yeah.
Okay.
They have, this board has architectural powers to decide.
I just need to know, so I can go back to him and tell him that he can't have them. I'm afraid I don't have the other colors, because...
Can you give Nancy a clue, are you looking for a sign that's not boxy, that's maybe shapeful? Just to help her out, so she has to go back to the owner.
Not, not this is a pretty wrong...
Yeah, not this is what, so are you looking for something that maybe is designed a little flowy, so it's not so boxy?
You're going to change the type of sign, or you want to, I'm like, or do you want, like, a box sign with a color that blends in more with the roof? And then they can use an alternate color for the lettering to make the, just so that...
Yeah, well, she mentioned...
So the lettering stands out, as opposed to the, the entire box standing out?
Yeah, she mentioned that it needs to be a rush, or a few different renderings or something, but this one, it's very...
Because I'm like...
This was a lighter background, ivory, with black letter. Really, you only have three options if you wanted to blend in with the building, and that would be pretty much rust and ivory, a black or a white.
So like, the gray with the black letters would be, yeah, these are probably the spot, you said, these are on the front.
Yeah, that was designed when we thought we could put them there.
Can you put them there, where these are, or no?
Those are the ones all down below, that's what we wanted to do, but, um...
That looks way better.
Can't.
Yeah, I was going to say, that, that kind of solves the one issue.
Yeah, that looks way better, when they're down there. Much more attractive, right?
Yeah.
I agree.
I don't believe they can even go, like, under the soffit, and up to, you know, like, to bring angle out and to hold them, I don't believe we had anything to grab onto, I could certainly check on that. Other than that, I mean, if you want to put a false facade in the middle that matches the other two, be quite an expense, but...
And then you have the end one.
Yeah.
There's three, actually, that aren't, that are kind of floating.
They're not on a gable, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, forgot the one on the right.
I think Nancy just needs some direction.
No, 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 I...
Maybe just those below.
What, these, these particular, like, this color and everything?
No, I mean, maybe just the ones that are on the roof below.
On, just those three? Pass.
Something like this, and they put a false facade right there, and there, and then keep them on that, like this. And that is so much better, it just looks like it kind of belongs, it just looks like it was like an afterthought, and just chucked out there. I think if they put a little false facade there, and there, they could hang it somewhere, they proposed on this one. And they kind of look like they belong there.
They're on the face yet, still in front of it, you know? They're on the...
Well, the real question, yeah, the question is...
They're here, sticking up past the roof.
Is it just, is it just the ones that aren't on the flat of the gable that you wouldn't be able to hang there? Or is it, is it all of them that would not really be able to hang?
Pretty, pretty much all of them that would be, that would be under there.
It's the same issue.
Yeah.
There's the structural there, so...
Yeah.
They have gutters.
They have gutters that can jut out at the bottom of this, that would obstruct them.
And then it connects right to the soffit, it's just not, no structure.
Right, that's all gutters there?
Mm-hmm.
So that wouldn't work anyway.
Right. Plus, they're sticking up past the roof, they're up, you know, they're up in here. They're like over here, in front, I mean, these are going to be catching a lot of snow, too, but...
I know, that's what I was looking at there, because they got the breaks up here on the roof, you can see it's about a roof, and it's got snow breaks up there. That's going to be, that's going to be 2,000 ounces of snow on top of the roof with the sign there, in front of each sign, or behind each sign.
They are raised enough to allow, like, yeah, water to come down, they're a couple inches up.
Water, yeah, water.
Right, that's how, yeah.
Yeah, it's just an awkward building, because it's so low.
Looking at this?
You know, the roof line is low. You like the black and white? No, I like the black, I mean, the black and white is simple, I mean, I agree, but it's...
What do you think?
So you said he thinks of the label as lost, man.
I think it makes the building look nice.
I mean, the black and white looks simple, it's just, it's just like you're taking, you know, those ones in between those two gables, it's like you're just dropping a box on top, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On gabled roofs, yeah, we have to do that a lot, when the way a building is built, if we can't... Sometimes we're fortunate, and just that six-inch band going across has, has, like, trust is running behind it, and we're able to anchor into that, and we can put them there, and then they don't, you know, they're not above the roof level, but they don't hang down really far, but it's just impossible to do here.
Yeah. And there are, there are seven tenants in the building, I guess, currently?
Yes, the landlord will be purchasing all of these, because he wants them all to be uniform, he doesn't want everyone booking their own signs, and, and then if a, if a tenant leaves, all they get to take out of that sign is the face, and a new one gets put in. Just makes it easier for him to rent these spaces out, if they can have a sign that's visible.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, I'm just kind of... Just looking at, yeah...
They can't go where they're shown, though.
Yeah, I know, I mean, now that they've been, yeah, I mean, but that is a cleaner, you know, with the roof, it's a cleaner law.
Look at the white signs, I know.
Yeah.
There's all the gutters and whatnot.
Yeah, exactly.
And then I think if you bracket it to put it in front of the gutters, then it looks like, it'll look like crap in a couple of years, you know, the way it's...
You're trying to pull it out.
Yeah, right, if you pull it out, then it's going to be an eyesore up there, up close, when you're up close.
Yeah.
You know, you can see from a distance, it'll be fine, but up close, it'll look like crap, if you can actually see.
All right. I mean, I don't know, I mean, other, I mean, other than that, I, I mean...
Did you have any suggestions that you might have brought to that client before they chose?
Not, not as far as where they'll be located, whether they were going to be lit or not lit, the building doesn't lend itself to individual letters. You know, it's, sometimes you just have to go with what you have to work with.
Yeah.
When I first went to see him, that's where you're seeing the ivory ones, that would be where we'd normally want to put them. And so that's why it was designed that way, and then when I sent a crew down to go up there and see what we had to work with, Frank said, you can't attach anything anywhere along there. So that's when we made them slightly smaller, so that we could fit two in each of the peaks, and then just set the other ones up there, because I believe they were two foot longer.
How tall are they?
Just two feet.
Two feet.
Yeah, two by 10?
That wouldn't create a snow problem, would it?
No, shouldn't, I mean, they're, they're trying to hold the snow on the roof anyway, so, it's just...
Just got to secure them well?
Yeah, exactly.
So the snow doesn't push them off?
It's a tough one, because there's no simple solution. We've been trying to take time with signs in the town, and try and upgrade them, and make things look nice, and...
Well, ideally, I think, you know, we had referenced about changing the materials itself, looking at a different shape or a different material, something like a wooden sign.
I like that, yeah, the wood signs that are lit from the top.
I like that better, when we look at these two alternatives, I, I think the black background with the white looks nicer than the ivory background with the black. In particular, I think that they'll age better, I think that, that over time, the white background is going to get dirty, it's not going to get cleaned, and it's, the black background is going to stay nice.
It's not just that, if it's black, the black is opaque, so the only thing you see at night are letters. So it almost resembles like channel letters, because you don't see the box at night.
That is bright.
Yeah, right.
And then then it'll...
Yeah, it's just white letters, you can't even see the box.
Fade into the roof, the dark roof, and it'll just be the, the light letters popping out. Yeah, that is nice.
I like the black, too.
I think unless we're going to look at, you know, like a wooden sign...
So we all agree, so we're all agreeing on the black, black with the white letters. The box is on the roof, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's kind of...
Is there an...
It's hard to tell, but I mean, there's no, there's no alternative at this point.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I mean, with that, I guess, if we feel, if everybody feels comfortable with it, I mean, maybe we'll just, a big, instead of trying to, if that's really, go back and forth, I think maybe we could approve it as is, and...
We will make that attachment very nice, very neat. Make sure, anything that you can see, like I said, it's only going to be a few inches, we'll match it into the roof shingles, so that you don't see the hardware.
Yeah, that would be good.
We'll keep it, we'll keep it really neat and tight.
As much as you can to blend it in, to make it, you know, not, not as noticeable. That'd be helpful, so with all that, if everybody's good with it, somebody want to make a motion to approve the submission?
So...
Okay. Anyone want to make a second?
Yeah.
All right. All right. All right, so motion made, is there all in favor?
Thank you. We'll make it look... We'll make it look good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you want, you could have this one back so we don't... We don't confuse it and...
Thank you. I have one. I have one.
Do you? How'd you end up with an extra one? Okay.
This is yours? Was this yours that you brought over or no?
No, it must be... Oh, it might be Rob's or somebody or whatever his packet that is.
No, this is all my stuff here. I didn't bring it over to you. This is somebody's. You guys...
All right, anyway, let's move on. Instead of trying to figure that one out. We've got one last thing here. We have the extension for Hammond O'Leary with Towleski Lot Line Realignment. They're seeking their second 90-day extension on a lot line realignment. And the extension will begin on June 2nd, 2023, and will run through September 1st, 2023.
I'll move that.
All right, motion made seconded, all in favor? Okay, with that, no other items on the agenda this evening? So if anybody have anything else they wish to discuss? If not, entertain...
I'll make a motion to adjourn, please.
Okay. Motion's made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. All right, thank you.